Call the meeting to order.
Yes.
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 First, we have approval of the minutes and this, the first set is from August 27, 2012, our work session, and I move approval of those minutes.
Second. Yes.
Absolutely, that's our work session.
Yes.
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 Next, we have the minutes from the August 27, 2012, regular meeting. Any questions or comments on those? Not, I move approval of those minutes.
Second. Yes.
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 This evening, we have a couple of public hearings. The first is the public hearing, dash, two, 2012, dash, 2013. It's our operating and capital budget, and I move to open the public hearing.
Second. Yes.
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 Bruce?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, I am pleased to present to you the fiscal year 2013 annual budget. Our fiscal year budget begins on October 1st, 2012, and ends on September 30, 2013. The annual budget is the most significant public policy document, operation guide, financial plan, and communication device prepared by the City of Mexico for its residents. The budget does reflect the city's response to our citizens. It establishes expectations, sets priorities, and sets, and reflects choices between what we will and will not do for the year. Government finance in the city, set up on fund accounting, is an accounting system that emphasizes accountability rather than profitability. Government agencies have special requirements to show in the financial statements and reports how much money is spent rather than how much profit was earned. Each fund operates like a separate business within the greater organization. This budget reflects well thought out, realistic, departmental budget requests, and sustains most operations at close to current levels, supports progress in strategic priorities, and does so with a decrease in the property tax rate. I want to note also that staff has been diligent about monitoring expenses and revenues to ensure that the city remains fiscally stable in these trying economic times while still providing core services in the most responsible ways possible. The budget total expenditures equals $15,445,000, with total revenues of $12,828,000. The expenditures of $2.6 million is greater than revenues, and it will be funded by bond proceeds, project reserves, and unreserved fund balances. The significant portion of the additional expenditures is for wastewater improvement projects, which is, again, funded by the bond proceeds, capital improvement projects through project reserves, and one-time capital outlay expenditures, which we have planned to spend, and that's why we're spending some of the reserves for those. I will also note that adequate reserve balances will exist in the operating funds to meet all the reserve requirements. On Tuesday, August 7th, we did have an election where the voters of the City of Mexico were asked a ballot question about calling for the reduction of property taxes levied for public parks by 10 cents and imposing a sales tax of 1/2, 1% for funding for parks. That did pass. Therefore, parks revenues, did the sales tax change the issue on the property tax levy? Therefore, for the most part, revenues in all funds now are stable, and the budget was able to be compiled without any significant reduction or numbers of programs, and also this budget meets all the requirements of a state statute of being a balanced budget. The county assesses property at a percent of market value. Therefore, commercial properties assessed at 32% of market value, personal property at 33.3%, residential property at 19%, agricultural property at 12%. Property tax rates are levied on a per hundred dollars of assessed property values. Therefore, if you own your home, you're only paying taxes on 19% of its value is while they figure the property taxes on them. The total assessed property values for this budget did increase by roughly 3.3 million from 135.2 million to 138.5 million. Most notable gains were in real estate valuations and personal property. The city's property tax rate for the general fund, which we established the last meeting, is 41 and 1/2 cents. For parks and recreation, a 10 cents. Public health and animal control, a 20 cents. Again, noted that we did decrease or reduce property taxes by 10 cents because of the park sales tax. The general fund and the public health are at the same level they were the previous year. As we look at sales tax for the general fund and the capital improvements fund, we are anticipated to be stable for the upcoming year. The new sales tax dedicated to the parks is estimated to be at $451,000. That will not be becoming collected until January 1, and we will not receive funds from that until March. Therefore, we'll only receive about seven months through the, or seven months of the fiscal year. Grocery seats tax is anticipated and expected to be stable also for this year. Property liability insurance renewal rates are estimated to increase by 5% during this year. Employee health rates are estimated to increase by 14%, and dental insurance rates estimated to increase by 10%. We are continuing with the GHP Coventry Qualified High Deductible Health Plan. Therefore, the increase in insurance rates will be proportionally split between the employee and the city. And this budget includes a 2 and 3 fourths percent increase to the wage schedule effective October 1. Staff changes include: A part-time building inspector position is being expanded to a full-time building inspector property maintenance position. The additional time will allow us to do more property maintenance projects in-house at a lower cost. Part-time recreation supervisor position is being expanded to a full-time aquatics and recreation supervisor position to oversee the operations of the pool and the recreation programs. If we look at historical staff levels, for the last five years is on the board, and the current year at 86. I will note that 13 of the employees relocated joint communications center in the first four years of this chart. Therefore, for the most part, we've historically been at around 90 employees, so we're still below generally our historical levels. A part of this budget, we are also still providing assistance under charitable organizations. We have the Mexico Senior Center, which requested 11,000. We are still budgeting them at 11,000. The Audrain County Historical Society at 4,900, and budgeted at 4,900. Miss Missouri Scholarship Pageant requested 10,000, budgeted at 10,000. The Help Center did request an increase this year to 15,000. However, we are only budgeting them at their current level at 10. The Optimus Youth Sports at 2,700 was the request, and the same amount, and we funded that request. Under the contract agencies, these are the agencies we do receive some form of either benefit from, or they're doing a program for us, or we're paying them for a service. The Audrain City County Health Unit, this will be 26,875. The Handy Shop to run the recycling program, 18,000. The Mexico Area Chamber of Commerce for Marketing Community, 13,000. And Presser Hall for Performance Dates, 10,000. This budget is also supported by grant funds, just short of $1 million. Those grant funds are broken out. Safe Roots to School, 113,000. The Missouri Plant Science Center Road, 820s Phase II, 137,000. The engineering infrastructure support of that also, 27,000. The Mid-America CDGB Road Grant for 550,000. Downtown Energy Grant, 17,000. And a DOT Runway Improvement Grant of 150,000. Now, we'll go into individual funds. The general fund revenue for fiscal year 2013 equals 5,406,000, and expenditures equal The estimated expenditures are greater than revenues by $109,445. However, improvements that qualify for expenditures, building improvements which are qualifying capital expenditures in the general fund equals 125,000. Therefore, no cash balances are being expended on reoccurring expenditures. These were planned expenses at this time, and we had money set aside for them. Therefore, the ending fund balance by policy for the general fund is recommended to be at 17%, and our ending fund balance for 2013 will be estimated to finish at 45%. Some of the significant projects within the general fund include, under public safety, ballistic vest, 25,000. Firearms upgrade, $6,265. Patrol vehicle, 75,000. A fire truck, 600,000. And I will note that this fire truck will be, planned to be purchased as a capital lease for this purchase, which will happen in the later part of the year, and that vehicle is yet to be determined, but we have budgeted for that, and it'll be spread out over a number of fiscal years. Community development, sidewalk replacement program, 7,500. Phase II of a comprehensive plan, 60,000. Under public works, a GPS rover unit at 16.5. Mini excavator, 25,000. Flatbed trailer, 11.5. A truck bed spreader, 8,000. Under cemetery, a backhoe purchase, which is actually a trade, a trade from the streets department, and under the purchase, the mini excavator will be 15,000, and we are then getting rid of the oldest backhoe, which is at the cemetery, and moving it out of the fleet, taking the streets backhoe and moving it to cemetery. Under building and grounds, the hot water pressure washer, 7,500. Building maintenance, 28,000. Building improvements, 50,000. And emergency generator, 50,000. The general fund also includes transfers to other funds of the Parks and Recreation, 205,000. And the airport, 10,000. Under the wastewater fund, budgeted revenues for fiscal year 2013 equal 2 and 1/2 million, and operating expenditures equal 1,964,000, plus a transfer of 672,000 for debt service. The wastewater operating budget reflects a reduction in cash value of roughly 71,000 due to a large number of capital outlay projects, which we'll cover shortly. However, the ending fund balance by policy for the wastewater fund is recommended to be at 25%, and the estimated ending balance will be at 42%. This budget does reflect a 12% increase in wastewater rates effective with the October billing to meet operational expenses, capital improvements, and these debt service obligations. This projected increase is the same amount estimated in the wastewater rate study to meet the required system improvements that we talked about previously for the last two, three, four, or five years, Roger? The projected, now, however, the projected additional borrowing that was anticipated for the Phase III wastewater improvements has been postponed. This budget does not reflect any additional issuance of additional bonds. What the bonds proceeds that are remaining for the Phase II and available cash on hand will be used for the initial Phase III improvements. Therefore, we're using cash on hand. We're using a method of pay-as-we-go program under this budget. The significant projects within the wastewater fund do include: The portable pump, 7,000. A used vehicle trade, 3,500. A generator, 26,000. Building repairs, 13.5. Collection system improvements, 50,000. Equipment replacement, 25,000. Lift station improvements, 30,000. Engineering design maps and surveys, 10,000. Contingency, 15,000. System slip lining, 175,000. And a vacuum tank truck, 164,000. Also, as we noted, we're still working on Phase II and Phase III of the wastewater systems, and these are being funded by bond proceeds. Therefore, we still have, under Phase II in this budget, to be completed roughly 1.7 million, and some additional bond proceeds will be sent on Phase III of 325,000. Again, these remaining bond proceeds that we have on hand. The sanitation fund, the budget revenues for fiscal year 2013 equal 554,000. Expenditures equal 539,000. Plus a project reserve for equipment replacement retention in the amount of 12,900. This is for the future purchase of a new street sweeper we're putting money away for. Therefore, the ending balance for 2013 is estimated to be at 39%. Also, needs to be noted that in 2004, the city began a 10-year residential refuse services contract with Daines Waste Disposal. This contract includes annual pricing adjustments that are set to take place as of April 1st of each year. This budget year will cover, covered in the, this will be the last full budget year covered by that 2004 contract. Therefore, a new contract will be negotiated during the term of this fiscal year. Economic Development Fund. Revenues are estimated for fiscal year at 190,000, expenditures at 189,000. The single largest expense in this fund is for the spec building. Other support out of this fund is for job creation, industrial recruitment, and economic development planning. The city, along with Audrain County and Progress, Mexico, has developed a partnership for the planning and development of the Mexico Industrial Technology Park. And additional information regarding the technical park, we, and how the planning on that, I assume, will be coming out in the next couple of months, how that's moving forward. The Parks and Recreation Fund. Revenues for fiscal year 2013 equal 928,000, and expenditures equal 1,400,000. Parks and Recreation budget does reflect the reduction in cash balance by 111,000 due to capital outlay needs for the projects we'll cover here shortly. Also included in here are transfers, as we noted earlier, from the general fund and the sales tax amount of the 451,000. Again, that's seven months. The significant projects that recovered this year under the parks: Swimming pool, lift, and stairs, 13,000. Pool house renovation, 21.5. Pickup truck, 20,000. Tennis court lights, 12.5. Park lighting, 10,000. Engineering design services contract, 38,000. Parks master plan and survey update, 25,000. Garfield Park, new restroom, 42.5. Lakeview Park, trail benches, 4,500. RS Greena Park Shelter Floor, 12,000. AP Green Estate Park and fencing receptacles, 12,000. Public Health and Animal Control. Revenues from the dedicated public health tax in the amount of 20 cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for the Humane Society. Animal tags and charges for impoundments are deposited into this fund. The annual appropriation to the Audrain City County Health Unit, which will be the last year of that. Costs for running the animal shelter, nuisance abatement, pest control are all paid out of this fund. Again, this 2013 will be the last appropriation to the City-City Health Unit. However, we have now been able to shift some additional expenditures to this fund, such as the city's building demolition program of 50,000, and also, it is reflecting some staffing costs for the nuisance enforcement and abatement programs. The Airport Fund. I'm sorry, let me, yeah, Airport Fund. Yeah, the budget of revenues for fiscal year are at 211,000, expenditures 236,000. The increase in expenditures in this fund is due to runway improvements funded by DOT grant in the amount of $150,000. A $27,000 transfer from the capital improvement sales tax fund is being made as a grant match for these runway improvements. Also, in order to maintain an any cash balance, a $10,000 transfer from the general fund is necessary. Capital improvement sales tax. The dedicated capital improvement sales tax is estimated to bring in $785,000 in revenue to support this fund. All expenditures from this fund is for capital outlay projects and transfers. Projects that included in the capital improvement sales tax this year: Pavement and curb replacement, 60,000. Sandebek pipe replacement, 20. Asphalt overlays, the annual program, 230,000. Public parking lot improvements, 20,000. Stormwater improvements, 140,000. YMCA drainage project, 8,000. Downtown streetlights improvements, 25,000. Project reserves, 73,000. Also, as said, we do transfer 300,000 to the general fund, 65,000 to the parks fund, and 27,000 to the airport fund to support projects in those funds as well. In closing, I want to note that the preparation of this budget document was a team effort. I want to especially like to thank and acknowledge Roger Haynes and all the department directors for their assistance in preparation of this document. We should certainly hope that this document will be well received by the City Council and the citizens of Mexico. And, Your Honor, we will attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
So, I was looking at the, at the raise issue, and I'm looking at your personnel services, and I'm figuring here like an 8% increase, not a 0 point, not 2.75. So, either one department's running extremely shorthanded, or I'm showing a difference. You're going to spend 4, 4,855,000 this year on personnel, and it says your budget for next year is 5,199, which is about 375,000, which is way more than 2.75%. So, somebody is running way under, or where's, where's that difference?
Yes, that's part of it, is that if you look at previously at budgeted numbers versus budgeted numbers, you'll notice that that increase is not near the same. The difference is, is we've had a number of positions that have been left open for reasons for budgeting issues. We've had some retirements and so on, and that re-estimated number reflects what we intend to spend this year based on the reduction of those positions being open at this time.
So, are we?
Roger, would you say anything to that?
That hits right on the head. We always budget as though we're employed at full capacity. And whenever you have someone leave employment through retirement or leave a position open through attrition, then you have savings, not only your wages, but your, you know, your work comp, your health, your death toll, your life insurance. So, there's, as you can see, between what we previously estimated in 2012 versus what we ended up revising our estimate, that alone is about $140,000.
So, what departments, so short right now? What, what service are we not providing to the systems? Because obviously, some department is hurting here desperately, so.
I mean, previously in 2012.
Well, well, this past year, yes.
Currently, we have a number of positions open in public safety that we're hiring for right now. We've also have, how many open in parks?
Well, we cut one, and we didn't fund one, and we had to get out on a, on a license fee.
Oh, okay.
We're down two, and public works off and on throughout the year. We're now, we just rehiring one?
How many are we, I guess, how many are we down in public safety since we're talking about, that's the worst?
Public safety, are we down five, now six?
You're down six officers? So, we are obviously not putting the same amount of officers on the road we used to put on the road.
We've got four on tap right now. We should be just about almost back at the speed by the end of the month.
So, you're planning on hiring six this month? Or you have four in training?
Four, four on tap to hire right now.
I would say, you know, for future reference, no offense to anybody, but public safety should be like the last department that we should be trying to save money from. I know everything is important, but I think the safety of our systems is probably A1 important.
And we did purposely leave one position open there to balance in the budget. The other ones happened by attrition, and then it becomes a series of timing to get them replaced.
Anything else?
I'd say, good job. I know you put a lot of time in it, and I know we had a real good review session back in August. You answered a lot of questions there, so thank you for that. Tremendous amount of effort goes into this planning document every year, so appreciate it. If not, any other questions? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second. Yes.
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 Next, we have a public hearing to discuss the past performance of the City of Mexico in carrying out fiscal year 2008 and fiscal year 2009, 2009, fiscal year 2009, community development block grant application, and I move to open the public hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor, both these projects were for funding for Mid-America Brick, and to cover the details of the public hearing, I'll turn to Rita Jackson.
This public hearing is to discuss the past performance by the city in carrying out the city's fiscal years 2008 and 2009, community development block grant projects. Both projects were for funding for Mid-America Brick. Block grant requires that you have two public hearings during the process of any project. You have a public hearing at the time, we seek the funding, and then at the end of the closing of the project, they request a past performance. How did the city do in carrying out the CDVG project? 2008 MO06 CDVG project was an action fund loan in the amount of $1 million for the work, for working capital to, to Mid-America Brick. Project 2009 PL41 consisted of a $250,000 forgivable loan to finance engineering calls for the demolition of certain lighted buildings at the Mid-America Brick site. Total project creation for Mid-America Brick is 74 jobs with 51% benefiting persons of low to moderate income, and a private investment of $19,500,000. You do have staff members here tonight to answer any questions that you might have regarding, uh, Mid-America Brick project. And staff recommends that council proceed with the public hearing. I will add that the Department of Economic Development was here about a month ago and monitored our files, and we debate everything is in order. We have not received any feedback from the union. And once you actually have to close our hearing, we will have to send in a document, and then, after we present that document to DED, the project is still open for another two years to actually ensure all the jobs are in place.
The 74 jobs, is that the current employment plus some employment that was done during the period of time they took down some of the buildings, or what, how did you, how did you total 74?
Well, when we actually wrote the two grants, both grants totaled that Mid-America Brick should actually create 74 new jobs total at the end of the project. Currently, they are at 44 jobs, and they do have additional time to bring it up to 74 jobs. But that, 74 is the number that they should have in completion of the project.
What's the timeline on that, may I ask, or do you know? Or do you know?
It's based on having two lines that currently have one.
Oh, okay. I guess I'd ask the million-dollar question, what's the status out there? Because I hear we're laid off some more people again, and...
I haven't spoken to Frank lately, and the last we spoke to him, he was trying to make schedules work to keep people employed, and he had about 40...
44 jobs.
Before at the time. I don't know where his status is right now.
When I spoke to him on Friday, he was at 44.
What happens if he doesn't get to 74? Well, I don't know what happens, and what happens, I mean, this is for our, this is us, right, the city, this grant. We have to monitor, or they're monitoring now, how we monitor it? Is that what this...
Yes, and actually, once the project, he has an additional two years to actually get up to the 74 jobs.
We are a sponsor of the grant, therefore, we monitor it just like the state does. And if for some reason they fail to meet the grant requirements, they would be the ones subject to any penalty or payback.
So, we're not?
We're not.
The cities, okay. That's, I worded that question. That's why I was trying to reword while you started talking about RFQ. But yeah, what's our liability for this? None?
Any other questions?
Is that the last issue that we have on it, or will there be another hearing?
We have one other block grant outstanding, which is the road, the MAB Road, CDGB funds for the road.
But as far as these grants are concerned, this is the end line?
This will be closeout, this will be considered closeout for us with the exception of the monitoring period for the next two years. Is that right?
We actually have 30 days after the completion of this hearing. We have 30 days to get in the closeout report documents, and then the project is actually closed out on our part, but then we monitor it for another two years to ensure that the jobs are in place.
If we have another hearing on their block grants, would it be possible to ask for them to have someone here from the company? I think they should be here if we're going to do this.
Yes. He was contacted that we were having a meeting tonight.
Are you upsetting when you don't see him here? This kind of money.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Yes.
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 Couple new business ordinance this evening. These are, this one is for first reading by title only. And Bill Number 2012-55, an ordinance revising the budget for the City of Mexico, Missouri, for the fiscal year October 1, 2011 to September 30, 2012 inclusive, and adopting the budget for the fiscal year October 1, 2012 to September 30, 2013 inclusive, appropriating the funds as allocated to various accounts and authorizing expenditure of such funds by the city manager and other officials for the purposes indicated. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. Earlier this evening, we held a public hearing on this, and that you have the copy of the budget document that has been published. Therefore, we recommend council proceed with the first reading by title only of the budget and the operating budget, the capital budget for the city for the next fiscal year.
I'd like to make a comment about this. I guess because I'm in the business world, I look at things a little different. Why exactly are we going across the board? Do we not do performance-based raises? I mean, I think that that's something that's not in here and that maybe should be in here because, you know, if you have an officer or a parks guy that's really, really good, why should he get the same exact amount as somebody who's not as good?
Right. I will comment that we are raising the wage scale by that. That doesn't mean everybody will get that. It's still based on performance evaluation.
But it is still based on performance.
Right.
Okay. I was, because I was like, what?
No. It is the wage scale that's going up. So, that, in essence, would be the maximum that anybody could receive, but it will still
Okay, I move for first reading of Bill Number 2012-55.
Second.
By title only.
Second, number two. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Keep going that way. Bill Number 2012-55, an ordinance revising the budget for the City of Mexico, Missouri, for the fiscal year October 1, 2011 to September 30, 2012 inclusive, and adopting the budget for the fiscal year October 1, 2012 to September 30, 2013 inclusive, appropriating the funds as allocated to various accounts and authorizing the expenditure of such funds by the city manager and other officials for the purposes indicated. Move for second reading by title only.
Just first reading.
Okay, our next new business ordinance this evening is Bill Number 2012-56, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents with M Engineering LLC doing business as Cochran Engineering for Engineering Services on Phase 2 of Audrain Road 820 Commerce Road. This is up for two readings by title only in passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. We did Phase 1 of this project, and we still have funds remaining. Therefore, we're asking to proceed to spend those funds under Phase 2, and to cover the details of the project, I will turn to Kenzie Russell.
I believe all of you are familiar with the project. This is paving the road, if you will, from Walmart down to the Plant Science Center. At the completion of the original project, there were funds left in consultation with MoDOT. The bulk of the funds came through a MoDOT grant. The matching funds were CDVG grant. In both grants, there are funds that remain, and we have the consensus to proceed with the second phase in order to utilize those funds. Now, we expect that to pave another 500 to 600 feet of roadway which would extend then across the front of the Plant Science Center and begin to touch the 52-acre industrial tech park tract. Cochran Engineering was the engineer on the first phase. We began the second phase with MoDOT's advice to proceed as an amendment to their contract and continue to work. However, higher-ups from the district office, when it went to Jeff City, said, "No, we have to close out the first phase and then start a second phase," as if it was entirely a new project. And so, we spent the latter half of the spring, early part of the summer, doing the closeout paperwork on the first phase, and we now are ready to proceed with the second phase. MoDOT's ready to obligate funds for it. And so, we did solicit RFQs, request for qualifications, had four firms respond. Cochran was the best qualified to do the work, and we have a proposed contract from them and a cost amount to exceed $25,487.25. And this is broken down roughly as $13,000 for design and $12,000 for the construction, administration, and residence inspection of the project. The remaining funds in the MoDOT grants, $161,000 plus, and in the CDVG, $23,362, so that we have sufficient funds to proceed. I'll entertain any questions about the process or contract or what we have here.
How many more feet do we have to go while we get down this?
How many more feet? Depends on where you want to call the end of it. Right now, the city limits extend to the end of the 52 acres, and that would be another 1,800 feet or so, Russell, I think. If we go on to the intersection out by the Teal Lake up overpass, you're talking about roughly a half mile to continue the paving.
And to be clear, that's all grant money that's going to be funding this project. There's no outlay of capital.
The intent is to use the grant money. The MoDOT funds are an 80/20 match. The 20%, we've been using the CDVG funds. If you run the percentages on these numbers, to maximize the MoDOT grants, the CDVG funds fall a little bit short. We would potentially have to pull about $2,000 of our capital improvement sales tax funds from our payment curve and gutter, or one of those line items, if we maximize, max out the MoDOT funds. Otherwise, if we max out the CDVG funds, we'll just end up turning back $10,000 or so to MoDOT. But we think we can get 500 to 600 feet accomplished here.
Thank you.
I move for reading of Bill Number 2012-56 by title only.
Second.
Yes.
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 Bill Number 2012-56, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents with M Engineering LLC, DBA Cochran Engineering for Engineering Services on Phase 2 of the Audrain Road 820/Commerce Road. I move for a second reading by title only of Bill Number 2012-56.
Second.
Yes.
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 Bill Number 2012-56, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents with M Engineering LLC, DBA Cochran Engineering for Engineering Services on Phase 2 of Audrain Road 820/Commerce Road. I move for passage of Bill Number 2012-56. Yes.
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 William.
Yes.
Yes.
Our other business this evening, we have the claims. Any comments or questions on the claims? Move we pay the claims.
Yes.
I have a quick question. Do I abstain because one checks me?
I would second all except... The two things for me. 7460 and 7461. 7460 and 7461.
I think that the motion would be that you would pay all claims with those two exceptions, and then you would come back and then you would make a motion to pay those two.
Like we did yesterday. That's what caught my eye.
So, would the motion be done as...
Or to the starter?
Yeah.
I move we pay the claims with, except those two numbers, whatever they are.
Second.
Box.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Flash.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Yes.
And I move we pay the remaining claims.
Second.
Box.
Yes.
Nichols. I abstain. Flash.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have council comments. Councilman Box.
Yes, I want to thank Bruce and Roger and Vicky and all the staff because I know it's a monumental task every year to put together a budget, and it's tough in the best of times and tougher in these times, and I thank you very much for your efforts. I did have someone contact me about the weeds, unsightly weeds along the railroad tracks on West Liberty, and I know that the railroad's tough to get to do anything, but if we could work on that, either just get them down or get the railroad to get them down.
Got that? Oh, yeah.
That's all.
I'd also like to give my kudos to the same. Budget's a hard process. I know it is. Appreciate all the work that's been put in to that. And second of all, you talked to Offenberg by chance from what we talked about last time?
They obviously still would like to do something with that building, to remove that building. In addition, they are looking to do some other things in that area as well, and so we're talking about some other options that we can look at, and once we have a better plan on that, we'll get you something on that, what we can do or think we can do.
Did y'all talk to them after it became public that they're moving?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't know if that might influence their decision or not, what they were going to do.
They also own a property out south of town as well.
Yeah.
I think their intention are still to remain downtown currently, though.
That's all I have. Thanks.
I'd also like to thank everybody for the budget. I think I'd recommend y'all get a two-week vacation, send it to Worcester, B.C., and see if you work on their budget. That's all I've got.
I wouldn't wish that on anyone.
Well, I'll echo the appreciation for all the work on the budget. Roger, I know it's tough, and I very much know it's tough, and the department directors, I know, got involved, had to be involved and get their numbers to you and Bruce, and you worked them from there, so that's great. I'm glad to see the repairs made at Liberty and Coal. That was really bad right there. Sidewalk had chipped away, and there's a hole there, and I'm glad to see the saves.
A little more that's going to happen there, but it's almost finished.
Good, good. Can we get an update on the Safe Routes to School project?
Contractor had indicated to us that he was going to start today. We cooperated by putting out a public notice, and then he did not start today. When we called him, he said that the area, the demolition products, the pavement and all that he was going to have to take out was too wet for him to haul into, and that's why he didn't start. So, we're still anticipating that he'll start this week on it. The contract clock is ticking, so his days are winding down.
How much time does he have on it? Do you have any idea?
The original, based on the original notice to proceed, November the 8th is his contract deadline.
He's not going to make it. Okay. All right, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. You did receive an invite for the 28th Annual Commerce and Industry Appreciation from the Chamber. That dinner will be held on the 23rd of October. If anyone interested, counsel, in attending that, please get with Marcy and let her know. Otherwise, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. I agree what's been said with the fine work down on the budget, as I mentioned earlier. Last Friday, I think Russell was at the Missouri Economic Development Conference, and Bruce and I went down for the noon lunch, and the governor presented the... and I went down for the noon lunch, and the governor presented the Missouri Community Assessment and Planning Process Award, called the MOCAP Award, and certified Mexico as an all-Missouri certified city. And Bruce, you want to explain what that means?
Well, first of all, I do want to acknowledge some of the folks who really worked hard on that, which Laura Williams, Barb Pickering, and was kind of the city folks behind that, but there was also a number of community folks working with some of the members of the chamber, and general community people that stepped up and helped provide information for that. I think the best way to explain it, and I'd even turn to Russell to echo this, but it's, it's really, I think, saying to a great extent that we went through the planning process, and again, this is like 20-some years that the city has been through this process now, but says that the city is, went through the process to be prepared to accept and deal with, you know, economic development projects that come our way. And so, we've looked at our needs, we've looked at where we're at, and by this planning process and identifying what we have, we're just better prepared to deal with and accept those prospects that come to us, and with hopes to get them to settle here. I think that'd be the best way I'd explain it. Russell, would you add anything to that?
Yeah, I think it allows each department to be able to submit to the state different sections to show that we are, as a community, as a city, prepared for these different things, like Bruce said. They outline through their application process what they're desiring, what they expect from the community and the partner. So, got that all together. Who are the only ones that...
Yeah, and as we picked up the award, the governor made the comment to me, he said, "You know, I hear a lot about Mexico, there's a lot going on there," and he said, "I know the community's moving forward," so I think that was nice comments from him, so. Nice award. Here's the actual award itself. I know some of you thought that was my beer mug or something, but it's not.
Somebody stole your flowers.
Are there any other comments? Public comments? Seeing none, I move we adjourn. Second.
Box.
Yes.
Nickels.
Yes.
Flash.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.